I now call the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, June 17th, 2024 at 6:00 PM to order. If you could please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation under God, with indivisibility and justice for all.
Again, wish to welcome everybody to this evening's meeting. I want to say thank you to the Lee County Board of Commissioners, young commissioners for their presentation, the opening of the ceremony today. We'll get into the agenda as we have some changes. If I could have you make an addition to item two, letter W, and it's a budget amendment add-on. Next item will be item three A, and that will be the Youth Voice, and that will be Omar Brito. And you will be pleased to know that we will be removing the public hearing regarding the zoning map amendment, which is five A. So there will be no public hearings for the zoning map five A. And an additional item to add is seven L, which is the Lee County Transportation Committee projects list. And we will have a closed session, which is item 10. We'll have a closed session for this evening. Any other changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move seven C, D, E, and F to consent agenda if the attorney doesn't see any reason for us not to do that.
Item seven C, seven D, seven F moved to the consent agenda?
Did you say D, Delta, or Fox, or Echo?
Seven C, seven D is in Delta, seven F is in Foxtrot.
You made an E also, weren't you?
Didn't you say E?
E also.
Did you say E as well?
C, D, E, and F.
I'm sorry, I missed E.
And can we add L?
And the committee chair, okay, item L as well. So I have seven C, seven D as in Delta, seven E is in Echo, seven F, and seven L as in Lima, add to the consent agenda? Any other changes?
Motion to approve amended?
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended with the additions, as well as moving from new business to the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that the letter to the Attorney General's office, I really appreciate you writing that. That seems to be an issue where people are taking advantage of us, and we're reaching out and trying to get that fixed, so thank you for writing that message.
Thank you, I had input. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. My computer went to sleep again, I apologize. Okay, next item on the agenda is the introduction of the 2024 Lee County Young Commissioners Leadership Program. And do I have... We have an introduction, so I would assume we're going to have an individual introduce themselves, give us a presentation, and then each of you will have the opportunity to come forward and identify yourself to the board, tell us what school you graduate, or excuse me, you're attending, and then we're going to have a mass photograph up front here, so. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Jeanne Afferson. I am the current 2023 to 2024 President of Lee County Young Commissioners. I would first of all like to thank you for having us today this evening, and for the dinner was very good. I just graduated from Lee Early College and will be going to NC State in the fall. Lee County Youth Commissioners is a group that I'm very passionate about, a group about community, our civic duty, and just helping our community and giving back to people like you who work hard to make sure we have great futures. And I would like to have my fellow members come up and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Merritt. I'm going to Eastly Middle School next, well, this year. I don't really know what to say.
Is there a reason that you were interested in joining?
I wanted to learn more about like the government and like in our area in Sanford, and just learn more about Sanford and stuff, because I don't really know anything about Sanford, and I've been living here 90% of my life, so.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Savannah Pressley, and I'm going to Central Carolina Academy next year, and I'll be in 11th grade.
Hi, I'm Kennedy White, and I currently go to Central Carolina Academy, and I'll be going to the 10th grade.
Hi, I'm Talitha Heibucker. I'll be going to a set Leadership Academy in the 9th grade.
Hi, I'm Julia Slowick. I'll be going into the 9th grade at Lee Early College.
I'm Ben Klug. I'll be going to Lee Senior into 9th grade.
Hello, my name is Sophia Macias, and I'll be going to 9th grade at LEC.
Hello, I am Allison Macias, and I'm going to be going into 8th grade at Wesley.
Hello, my name is Addison Tenard. I'm the current Vice President of Young Commissioners. I am 16, going into the 11th grade at Lee Early College.
Good evening, my name is Franklin Doe. I'm going into the 10th grade at Lee Early College.
Hello, I'm Omar Brito, and I'm going to 11th grade at Lee Early College.
Thank you. Omar, if you want to please present your voice, youth voices, and then, once you're done, everybody's going to come forward. We're all going to come out, we're going to get a big picture, okay?
All right, thank you, all right. So once again, I'm Omar Brito, and I'm going to 11th grade at Lee Early College, and I've been selected to represent Lee County 4H at the Youth Voice, NC Youth Voice this year. And our requirement of going to that event this year is giving a presentation or a speech, should I say, at your respective county commissioner's meeting. And today I want to talk about an issue in the community that, from my perspective as a teen, can see. So I know all of you have heard of like teens saying, "Well, there's not much to do here in Sanford," or "There's nothing to do here in Lee County," right? And that's an issue that seems to be going on every year, right? Even with all the new features and things they all been doing to try to like help that issue be resolved. But there are, there are things to do here, but it seems that teens are not informed of everything that is being done. So from the mountain bike, the mountain bike trailers at San Lee, or the library, the many things you can do, the 3D printing, the computer, or all the restaurants and shops downtown, the tours you can take to go downtown, there's, there's tons of things to do here, right? But it seems that teens aren't really informed of this stuff. And I think it should be something that should be more talked about, because if teens don't really have much to do here, they're usually just stuck in their room, or on their computer, on their phone, and that's not really good for, for us, for our mental health, physical health, really. It's not really good for us, so. It'd be nice to get talked about more since teens can get out and do things, because if they don't, they're going to stay inside and be on their phones, and that's, that's never good. It can lead to bullying in schools, and they'll release it somewhere else. And I personally think, and I think some other teens would agree, like the Youth Council, and also the other people in the teen, the Youth Council of Lee County, as I'm also a part of that, that like we should have, we should have more things to do here in Lee County, but I don't think there's enough. So some of the things that I've been thinking about, like implementing, are like programs to, to like internships, to partner with you guys, with you guys, all the county, the county commissioners, or really any internships with any of the boards of the commission, that the county like has with. So this is good, because it seems that teens aren't really involved in like many clubs anymore as they used to be. Of course, there are many teens like me and my, and my rest of my peers that are involved in these clubs, but a lot of them aren't really as involved as they should be. And if they get more involved into clubs and, and participate in the community that we are part of, it will make this whole community stronger, and we can have teens doing more things here. Really, I really think it's important for this to happen, since I've seen a lot of bullying in schools, especially in the, in middle school. Right now, I go to Lee Early College, but that's not really a school where a lot of bullying happens. But in other schools, as I've heard, that there's fights like almost every day or every other day, or there's people bullying kids on social media pages, and other social media pages are filming kids fight and then posting them on there, and that's not, that's not a good thing to happen. And I think really it's because kids aren't really going out with these other people like you guys that are making these important decisions and are getting, getting to know the community that they can be a part of. And I just think it's something that we should, it should be talked about more. And of course, the Youth Council is trying their best to make a difference. And we lately, recently hosted the Pop-Up in the Park with Parks and Rec, and it was, it was kind of a success, since it was our, kind of our first year doing it. But I think as the Youth Council gets more traction, we can make more of a difference. And I think it's just, we should, I wanted to come and talk to you about this, since if we get more attention around this, more teens will start to do these things that we're talking about and we want to implement, and it'll help the community grow stronger. And that's really all I wanted to talk about today. Thank you for your time and everything.
Thank you. Do we have questions for Omar? Commissioner Carver?
I don't have a question, but I do appreciate the intentionality of your comments and your expectations. And I think I'm ready to turn my Social Security over to somebody like you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you also for your time.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, just comment on, thank you first for being out here and voicing your opinion, and that is a big concern about his youth, how to keep them in the right places, doing the right things. So we're hoping with some of the things we've got coming up, the youth will be more involved. Back in our days, Commissioner Sharp and I, we just had to cruise up and down a place called Kendale. But, but thank you for your comments, and thank you for each one you coming out tonight and being interested in our local government. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the new implementation of the new library and also the, the sports complex will help with that involvement, and it can help them, all the teens kind of like congregate together and share their ideas. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thanks for everybody stepping up, it's good to see, I love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorback?
I agree, thank you guys for coming out today, and then also each of you taking time out of your schedule to join something that could be benefiting to not only you, but the peers around you. And also, I would encourage, do you have a booth at the fair rented yet?
Yeah, so the Youth Council, the Young Commissioners, we do a fair booth every year
Perfect.
at the, at the fair. And this year, we're, we're still in the planning process of deciding what our, like, topic around that table is going to be.
Yeah, dunk take? You're going to rent a dunk take? You guys are going to all join in on people, people dunking you?
We'll take that into consideration.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, so you're the chairman of the Youth Council as well. Now, you, you were here speaking to us a few meetings back.
No, that was, that was the chairman, that was Donovan.
Okay, well, both of y'all are great speakers, and both of you are going to be good leaders. And we appreciate you coming out and, and your knowledge of what teens, high school people want to happen. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
Omar, and I appreciate it. I know the sheriff's sitting in the back there, and he and the chief deputy have taken notes. And if you wish, have y'all had an opportunity to meet the sheriff? Young Commissioners?
Yeah, so Wednesday we'll be going over there to meet with the sheriff.
Wednesday, okay, okay. Keep those questions and those comments, and make sure you pelt him with them, okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay, if we could get the young commissioners to move forward here, and we'll get a group photograph? Next item on the agenda is public comments. We have two individuals. First one, Alan Rumel. And if I could ask you please to make sure you state your name as well as your address, sir? And you do have three minutes?
Thank you, Commissioners, Alan Rumel, 1001 Northview Drive in Sanford. I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen, not on behalf of the school board. So I'm going to be blunt. I think this board is broken with regard to financial duties. Here's my perspective for saying that. In 2023, I helped bring the first school board budget presentation to the commissioners in anyone's memory. While it didn't change anything in the proposed budget, it opened up channels of communication that had been closed for a long time, which is a good thing. The idea being that opening up conversation earlier and making it more frequent would help the two boards align on goals and feasible expectations. One of the things communicated was that bringing the budget request earlier, since it is very large, would allow time for the commissioners to investigate and consider more fully the school system request. Fast forward to 2024, and the school board not only opened up several lines of communication, but backed up the budget calendar by a month, and brought a presentation that dwarfed 2023 in terms of detail and information. The Board of Education did receive and answer a few specific questions, but the real tangible action was two motions brought to explore, not allocate, but explore, giving the school system more than what was in the county manager's proposal. Both of those motions were voted down in bipartisan fashion. So you voted down exploring an option, an option that most commissioners say that they support individually. So I was also pretty shocked to hear the county manager state that she had no idea the school system would be bringing such a large request this year. But the fact, the fact that the request would be substantial has been communicated since at least last fall. Lastly, the BOC chair said that this board sets financial priorities in December at the board retreat for the upcoming budget. And it seems like those priorities are so fixed that later discussion is frowned upon based on those failed motions that I just talked about to reopen discussion about some specific priorities. I just don't understand how such strict priorities can be set before ever receiving a single budget request. So based on those events, the words that I hear and the actions I see just don't match up, which is why I said I think the board is broken with regard to financial duties. I don't understand the bipartisan refusal to have financial discussions and explore financial options, which is one of the most essential roles of the Board of Commissioners, which is how to spend taxpayers' hard-earned money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual, Chad Deal. And again, would you please state your name as well as your address for the record?
Chad Deal, 2448 Hickory House Road. And I just want to say thank you for all that y'all do, because I know you do a lot, just like the fire service. And hopefully with the study that's going on, we'll find out more information that's going on in the county. But I do want to say that, just like this young man and these young kids here said, communications is the key. If we do not communicate between the parties, we're never going to get anywhere we want to be. So a year ago, we stood up for flat tax, now we're having the study. So communications is part of the key. And if we don't communicate, we're always going to be in a disagreement. But if we can find a way to find common ground somewhere, it doesn't mean arguing and bickering. We just got to talk through the problems that we're faced. So I just want to make sure that y'all know, my doors at Tranway Fire Department is always open. Any business meeting night, any board meeting night, any training night, I will put you in some turnout gear and we will go fight some fire, if that's what you'd like to do. The door is always open, you just got to come. The invitation's here, you got to come. So I understand everybody's got jobs, everybody's got things to do, but again, we've got to inspire these people. Mark, I'm not picking on you, but Mark's got Mark Mondays. Maybe the commissioners need Kirkman on Wednesdays, or county manager on Thursdays. If they don't learn, who's going to teach them? They can't read everything in a book, and it's on us, because I've had, unfortunately, young kids that do not know how to operate a push mower. That's sad. If we, as an adult, can't teach our kids how to grow, then that is on us, not them. So we've got to tell them what they need to know, and as commissioners, and they're wanting to be inspired commissioners, maybe we need Wednesdays with Kirk, or whichever one that wants to talk. Doctor, I know you've got a lot going on, but maybe you can throw some chiropractor in there. But anyway, we, we've got to inspire other people, just like the volunteer fire service does with gaining these new volunteers. It's a job to get new volunteers to come in, so it's all about coaxing them and telling them what they got to do, and things like that. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for what you do. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. Everyone has the ballot at their seat. And if I could ask you to quickly fill it out and submit that to the clerk?
Mr. Chairman, is there any time to make any comments about this, or is that out of order?
In all honesty, we've had their applications in our possession.
Mr. Chair, we did receive a few... Thanks, Bill. We did receive a few additional applications, which I've set at your seats. I did email a few out, but also have the hard copies at your seats as well. These were received in the last week, and even one today. So those are there for your consideration. And then if, when you are all complete with your ballot, if you will sign the second page.
Am I hearing you say we, we can't make any recommendations or anything like that? Is that what you're saying?
In the past, we've usually done a silent ballot, simply because we don't want to put someone in a position of embarrassing someone or things like that, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that you make it, oh, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I am in agreement with Commissioner Carver on that, with us just receiving the information. Couple of them, it's tough to vote for or against one of those when you just get the application. Preserve on that.
Would you like, would you like to make a motion to extend it?
Can we just do it on certain boards, or do we have to do it on the whole ballot?
I mean, you can, you can vote who you want for and who you don't want to, right?
Either way, is that what you're saying? In other words, for example, the Central Carolina Board of Trustees, we just had the application come in, and we've only got two considerations, so it's tough to consider one. And just going over it in my reading right quick, one of them's already on there, and not knowing that until you receive this information, it's tough to...
So the question is, are you forced to vote on somebody or not vote on somebody?
Well, no, my question is, are we...
No, I'm sorry, I was, I was asking attorney, are you, are you forced to vote on, on any particular one or not?
I think this is our standard practice, is to vote at this meeting. I don't know what the bylaws...
Can a commissioner leave with something blank if he chooses to?
I mean, you have a duty to vote, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
The only thing I would say is that if you were to say not vote on the Board of Trustees, and I assume what would happen is if you, not like one individual commissioner, but as the whole group, that position would just maybe remain vacant until you all voted on that position. Because the term expires. Yes, I would assume.
Another question on Parks and Recreation. We have two regular and two alternate. Are we to put, which two we want as regular and which two alternate?
Please mark that as such, yes.
I'm a little lost. Are we going to make a recommendation not to vote on some categories or not? I'm not, I'm just, I already, I already handed my ballot in some...
Yeah, I think she just stated standard practice to vote on it tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, to be clear, we do need a, excuse me, to be clear, we do need a motion to vote by ballot. Motion to vote by ballot.
Motion's been made to vote by ballot? Any further discussion? I know, everybody dumps everything into the last minute. I've sat down and reviewed all of the applications I've received in a timely manner. And now we have latecomers. Young men and women of Lee County, be prompt. So the motion's been made, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're voting by ballot. Madam Clerk, do we have all of the ballots in? Did everybody turn their ballot in?
I did.
Yes.
Okay, then we'll continue. Next item on the agenda, new business, is permission for Lee County Libraries to allow vendor alcohol sales at the 2024 PopCon event. You don't look like Beth.
Went home ill today.
Okay, can your name, please?
My name is Christopher. I'm the Assistant Director at the library.
Thank you, Christopher. I'm sorry, it's got Beth's name on here.
Good evening, Commissioners, Administration. As you know, we have the PopCon event at the library every summer for the past several years. This year's event will be on Saturday, August 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Over the last few years, we have made the request to allow two of our vendors to sell sealed bottles of mead and cider at this event. We are here to bring this request again, to be able to continue this practice. They will be under the vendor agreement that has been approved by the legal department and is included in your agenda. If you would like more information about the event and why we have included these vendors, there's information in your agenda packet, but I'm also happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So, this has been done for two years now, you said, right?
This would be, I think we've done it three years.
And you've had no issues with your vendors?
No, thank you. They have followed the rules very well every year.
Move to approve?
Motion been made to approve the PopCon event. Any further discussion? Commissioner, Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Warbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Lovick?
I think everyone knows my view on this. I've voted the same each time. I know you can have events without alcohol. I had some relatives go to an event, had 13 stages, four days, 60,000 to 70,000 people there. No alcohol whatsoever was involved. Boy Scout troops, Girl Scout troops, things like that were involved. So, I don't think we need, I'll state it like I did last year, books and booze. I just, our officers back there would tell us gunpowder and alcohol do not go together. So, what I'm trying to say is, through our county liability, I think our attorneys would agree, if something does happen, I know we've had situations, nothing did happen, I would dare say there wouldn't be a lawyer or one, that if something does happen, Lee County's going to be on that lawsuit somewhere. So, I just, there again, I just don't believe in the books and the booze. I don't think we need to be bringing that toward our libraries and go against what it says on our side about not having alcohol on the premises. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Carver?
I think I'm going to vote for this motion, but I don't want it to extend to the other motions that have, that'll come up that have to do with using alcohol in Parks and Recreation areas. In general, that doesn't apply. This is a very specific, narrow use of alcohol. The alcohol is being sold and not consumed in quantity. It's, and it's a constrained area. There's just a whole bunch of differences between that and when we consider use of alcohol in the Parks and Recreation's area. So, I don't see that that would be inappropriate to vote yes here and no there, but I just want to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion been made to approve, give permission to Lee County Libraries to allow vendors to sell sealed bottles of alcohol, cider, and mead at the 2024 Lee County Library PopCon event. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Can I have a, please have a show of all the hands for aye. Raise your hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Thank you. Next item on... Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chris. Next item on the agenda is the Tax Bill Write-Off 2013. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Tonight, I come before you with the 2013 Tax Bill Write-Off. We request authorization for a tax collector to write off the 2013 delinquent tax bills in the amount of $15,212.09 per General Statute 105-373-G and 105-378. So, we come before you tonight, asking for the authority to write off the delinquent. 2013 taxes, $15,212.09. Real property is $1,559.07, and personal property in the amount of $13,653.02 for the two statutes I just mentioned just a minute ago. These taxes were first due on September 1st of 2013. A detailed list of the accounts is on file in the clerk's office and on the County website. Also, I've attached a three-year history of the tax write-offs for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Brown? Commissioner Carver?
None.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, at least we're going down in numbers, though.
Commissioner Connect?
None. Move to approve?
Motion been made to approve the tax collector's write-off for 2013. Continuing out for questions for Mr. Brown? Commissioner Warbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp? Seeing there are none, the motion you've heard is to authorize a tax collector write off the 2013 delinquent tax bills in the amount of $15,212.09 per North Carolina General Statute 105-373-Gulf and 105-378. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Fire District Budget Ordinance. And I understand Ben is not with us.
No. You have before you, the Fire District Budget Ordinance has been prepared based on the rates that were presented to you by the Fire Advisory Board, so it's ready for your consideration.
Questions for Lisa? Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Warbeck?
No questions. I just wanted to, I don't know if I can take the time to extend, thank you for talking on communication and opening those lines. I know there was quite a bit of disagreement last year on the flat tax and with the increases that have, that are more than likely going to be approved tonight. I, I would love the line of communication to open up. There were some, I know heated emotions that came out last year, and I would like to think that with the potential pending approval, that it extends that we do appreciate everything that our volunteer Fire Departments are doing and the, and the issues that they're facing with, you know, low rates in volunteer and the stuff that they've got to do. But anyways, I guess I don't have questions. I just wanted to say thank you for that and that, moving forward, I hope those lines can make, communications can go on with less emotions.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp?
Motion to approve.
Motion been made to approve the Fire District Budget Ordinance for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Any further discussion? And if I can add, just off the top, Cindy, do we have anything with the Fire Departments interacting with the young Commissioners or the Youth Council? We may want to plan on doing that in the future. And Fire Department, Fire Chiefs? He's right there. Pick on him. All right, without further ado, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the next item, which is the Approve the Contract with the City of Sanford for Planning Services?
Yes, I'll introduce that. Mr. Chair, so since 2013, the Board of Commissioners has contracted with the city for the city to provide planning services to the county. These services include, are not limited, limited to zoning administration, enforcement, subdivision administration, long-range planning, and land use planning. So, we're just asking the Board to vote on that. Would ask, I think Commissioner Sharp may have a motion to recuse himself?
Yep, that's what we were just talking about before.
Commissioner Sharp has made the motion to recuse himself as he is an employee of the city. All those in favor, any further discussion? Let me rephrase that. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
With that, motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the contract with the City of Sanford for Planning Services. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget Ordinance.
Yes, sir. The budget ordinance before you is based on the recommended budget that I presented to you earlier this year, and the only change has been made from what was recommended to you was we did make the move of one position from the General Services Budget to Parks and Recreation. It does not change the overall totals.
Questions for Lisa? Commissioner Carver?
No questions. I just want to say that there has been a lively discussion over this ordinance. Tip of the hat to Lisa and her staff for being able to put together that massive budget. It's awesome. I do believe there are areas that we're going to have to struggle with in the future that have to do with things that the County Manager advised us about with the possibility of having to increase taxes if we're going to be able to continue to provide the services we expect next year. Also, there is a continued issue that has to do with whether or not we have a good solution about financing our responsibility, our part of the responsibility for, for K-12, for Lee County Schools. I think the Chairman of the School Board has recommended that we get together and talk about those things. We've talked about communication tonight. We've got a year, basically, but realistically, I think we ought to look at the kind of comments that have been made tonight that looks at what kind of priorities you want to set for the budget in December, not waiting until it's a fait accompli kind of thing. It's a massive responsibility, and I know we don't want to be meddling, but at the same time, I think we have to be making some recommendations that's going to change some of the ways that we spend our money. At least that would be my hope. Anyway, again, thank you for the staff for their great work in getting this ready to go. That's all.
Commissioner Lovick?
Good comments from Commissioner Carver. I agree with him on those. And with that being said, the, one of the main goals we set forth at the beginning of our budget sessions were to keep the taxes the same, and that's a very big feat, and thank you for all the hard work, finances, County Manager, and everyone involved. I know some departments didn't get everything they wanted. I wish we had the magic wand and could have made that possible. I'm still hopeful that the state will do the right thing for our teachers and help those out on that, and our part putting in will help make up some differences. So, with that being said, just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Warbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
Move to approve.
Motion been made to approve the budget as presented. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I just want to compliment the County Manager on the job she's done, and you do know what you're doing despite what some of our fellow people in public comments are talking about. So, thank you for your hard work and the rest of the staff as well.
All right, we have the Budget Ordinance for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Move to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the next item is the Fiscal Year 2025-2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, sir. You have before you a resolution to adopt the CIP for the Fiscal Year 25-29 as recommended.
Questions for the manager regarding the CIP? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves?
I've got a concern about the new law enforcement center. Would it, would it be your recommendation that we maybe set it out a couple of years or so?
If the Board is uncomfortable at this point with the information that you have and where you want to go with it, I would recommend that you move it out at least one year. If you leave it where it is right now, then I would say we would need to start planning if you wanted to finance it in the year I have it. If you're not comfortable with that at this point, then I would suggest you move it out at least one year, and that still gives us time to start looking for land and have options for you, and we could do a major discussion at our December Board Retreat on the center and give us more information.
I would hope that we have an opportunity to sit with General Services and find out more about the actual building as it sits. I'm not sure that I'm comfortable moving forward without having that information.
And we can work with you to either do a work session prior to our retreat or at our retreat in December.
That would work.
We had planned to try to move our CIP process up and have y'all possibly adopt that at the December retreat or have a major discussion on that, so that would time out well with that, if that's the choice of the Board.
I'd like to throw in, if I'm allowed to, can I add to your comment? I'd like to add in, yeah, just also would love to see option three, but done in phases potentially. And it not be all one, I know, oh my gosh, the... Is it Withers and Ravenel?
No, Mosley.
It's Mosley, Architects. I know they had stated that on a couple of the bigger, the beds and the kitchen and the storage, that they... beds and the kitchen and the storage that they put them on the walls in, in order to expand. So, I would love to be able to see option three expanded upon potentially a, a two-phase or two-part. Got you.
Commissioner Connect?
I missed the last portion. Did, did you make a motion on that to move it a year out, or?
I'm going to offer the motion, yes. I can do it now if you like.
Please.
I'll put motion to extend it another year.
Motion's been made to extend the law enforcement proposal on the CIP by one year. Continuing on with questions for the commissioner, excuse me, for the manager, Commissioner Vor, Commissioner Lovick?
No, disagree with both of you. I agree with both of your comments on that. We got a lot on our plates, and I think, uh, we're going to discuss in the next thing on the bond referendum, and I think that's probably what we're going to start looking at him to get more in number-wise. I think maybe we do need to put that off. So, just a comment. Thank you. No questions.
Commissioner Carver?
I guess the only thing is, what I heard Mrs. Minner say is that there would be some effort to go ahead and identify the property and continue with the planning, but not with the same intensity as otherwise, uh, if, if we didn't delay it a year, right?
That's correct. We will continue to do research for properties and stuff, but we won't be looking for, going out for bids for architects or anything like that until we get a better vision of what the board wants to do. So, we'll come in, but we'll make sure it's an agenda item for the board's retreat in December.
So, we have a motion to approve the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2029 with the caveat of putting out the law enforcement center by one more year. Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the next item?
Yes, sir. Um, we have put an item on to discuss a potential bond referendum. I had, um, there have been some comments at our work session about a potential bond referendum, and then some other comments along the way. So, mainly put this on the agenda so that the board would be aware that if you want to do a referendum in November of this year, we would need to take some actions tonight. Otherwise, it will be spring of 2026 before another referendum could be scheduled because you have to have a full, um, general election. So, this mainly for informational purposes. We have drafted a sample, um, those, I had bond council draft a potential notice of intent that is very vague and lists three different types of bonds that you could consider if you're interested. Um, at this time of which you can set them out, so you can pick or choose which types of bonds if there is any interest. And there's also a potential calendar on page 490 of your agenda package that would lay out, um, the timeframes and the things we would need to do. And I'll be glad to answer any questions or provide additional information based on your questions.
Questions for the manager. Commissioner Carver?
I, I, I think that the idea that I had talking about a referendum was that we came up to a discussion on where the budget was, set the priority of not increasing taxes, and made some hard decisions based on the fact that we didn't feel that the, uh, citizens would feel kindly to having their taxes increased at this time. So, my mind goes to the idea that, well, why don't we ask them about some specific projects that they might be willing to embrace even with the tax increase because they can see the importance of them to our community, not the least of which would be the, uh, the jail complex that we've talked about. But also, there's some issues with, uh, long-term disquiet about things like the auditorium for, uh, for Southern Lee, which has hung around for a long time. Would it be on the mind of the, of taxpayers to say, no, let's go ahead and do this anyway? Um, it's a way for them to go ahead and vote on whether or not we increase taxes for specific purposes, which I'm wondering whether or not that might not be appreciated. The question that I have specifically is if you have a relatively small referendum, for example, like the, uh, the auditorium, which I think is about $13 million, would the, the cost of having that bond, uh, processed, if it was a general obligation bond, be so big that having that small amount would not be appropriate?
I would think at that level of amount that you would just do a limited obligations bonds like we have done for some other things. If you're going to go to the effort of a bond referendum, that you would want to do a larger issuance for multiple purposes or multiple projects. It could be all school bond referendum, but it would be for multiple projects. Um, so.
Okay, so the plan could be, let's not do the referendum now. Let's do some serious planning next year and try to put together a, uh, an idea of what we don't think we're going to be able to umbrella with next year's budget, even though some of these things have hung on forever, and include possibly the $100 million that are needed or $85 million that might be needed for the, uh, complex, something like that. I guess if we go that way, uh, be honest with you, I won't be here next year. But, it seems to me that, uh, trying to get past the idea that we have such a caution about rising, raising taxes that we sometimes have trouble considering things we absolutely really need to do. Uh, it also may, well, anyway, that's, that, that's why I think that it would be worthwhile. Get the, get the, uh, citizens to go ahead and consider specific events and tell us whether or not they're willing to pay for them or not, making sure that, uh, we have enthusiastically, um, justifying why they have to be here. I think spending 15 minutes talking to the sheriff, we'd understand why we need the jail. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
With that, I think we've heard several times in the past and several times tonight, communications. And with that being said, I, I think if we try to do a bond referendum this fall, taxpayers are going to look at us, well, what are they trying to do? I thi, I think it's too quick. I think we need to, just like we had, again, communications, we need to get out there to the taxpayers, whilst required by law, for one, far as our jails and things like that, and know that it's got to be done. It's not something we just want to do a bond because we think it's a good idea. A lot of things, we're, our hands are tied and we, we must do them. So, my suggestion is just not do one this fall, but let's get, uh, on board, find the things we need, get the notice out there to the people, what our schools have and don't have, what they need, get those things out there that the students need and education-wise, and then let's put it on there and let the taxpayers know and have a vote on it and say it. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I was trying to find my things. Uh, I would say, I guess my, my more, um, why I lean more towards a bond referendum would be, one, we've got two years before we can put it back on. Um, as I know, the, the school board has talked about it, some of our larger projects. I mean, we're putting things in place now that we won't even receive until next year. So, if we wait another two years to even have this discussion or even put it back on something that's on a ballot, we're looking at three years. So, you're still looking at an auditorium, uh, middle school gyms, you're looking at a jail that I know we need. Like, there's, I think, some larger ticket items that instead of pushing back, we could at least have a larger discussion on what a bond referendum would look like on trying to put some of these in action and at least educate on what that would entail on what some of the projects that we do have. Now, I know that's harder to put some specifics on, on money, on exactly what it's being used for, but, um, and I'm not talking about the, you know, a 13, $14 million bond referendum. I'm talking about a larger one that at least starts getting some of these things checked off a list that our students need, that our, um, our sheriff and stuff needs. Like, there's some larger projects that I believe that it would, putting it to the taxpayers and putting that onto a vote would allow them a larger voice, and possibly with, I don't know, it feels like 31 days of voting, they could have some questions to talk about. Um, that could kind of go back and we can at least voice that if they don't show up to a meeting like this, or they're not reading the paper, or they're not having discussions with us, that maybe we can educate them a little bit more on what it looks like to fund these big projects that are going to take years to implement. Is, I guess, more why I would like to continue the discussion. And obviously, I know that we're pressed for time, um, but I, I think it's, I think it's something that we owe it to at least explore more, um, and something to push forward with. That's it.
Commissioner Reeves?
Well, I can say that I'm not interested in a bond referendum right now. I do feel that it's incumbent upon us to take a look as a team and find out what projects prioritize the projects we have in mind. And at some point, I would imagine if you do anything for the school, you have to invite the school board to participate at some level. So, we need a little time, I think.
Commissioner Sharp?
Like Commissioner Vorbeck said, I, you know, I'm interested in more, uh, specifics and exactly what, how much money and what we're spending it on. But I would consider an education bond, and that's what I'm more interested in than the other two things that are on the list. But, um, I'm willing to further talk about that at this time. So, if we have time to talk about, I don't, I don't know if, you know, you said we're on a tight schedule.
The, the, the schedule we're talking about is putting it on the bond referendum for this fall. That's the, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, but I don't think we have long to do it.
No, if your intentions are to have it on the November referendum, or November referendum, we would have to decide tonight how much you wanted to do and for what purposes. That's how tight a timeframe we're on. We would need to run the notice of intent June 27th. Um, we would need, if you do a school bond referendum, please understand that the school board would have to ratify what you're doing because typically, the process starts with them, um, to come to ask for you to do school bonds. Also, I want to explain that if we don't do this, does not mean that all their projects are on hold until you consider doing a referendum. Again, we can still move ahead with projects as we had planned. The CIP laid out most of this being done through either debt financing, either limited obligation bonds as we approach the projects, or you could do a larger bond referendum down the road for the bigger projects. So, it does not stop what we are already working on and have laid out in the CIP in the next coming years and stuff. So, I just wanted to clarify that to you also. We can still move ahead with those projects as we've laid out in the CIP and start those planning processes.
Okay, this was for discussion?
Can I make another comment? Uh, listening to what Commissioner Vorbeck said, I'm really wooed to her side of this, but, uh, listening to, uh, the county manager, I'm not sure we can actually do due diligence to have this ready by the 27th of June. And as unfortunate as that is, um, I guess we have to consider not doing it in, in, uh, this cycle, this general election.
Thank you. And if I could add a comment, that during our workshop, we had the school board attending, and we made the motion to, or basically asking the school chair to set up with our board, and we'll have a joint board meeting. This will be one of the topics to put on for discussion. We're talking about next month, if it's possible, and the staff will work arrange, arrangements with both your board and our board to, um, set that up so that we can focus moving forward on that. Seeing there's no other discussions on that topic, um, we'll move on to the managers' reports and the March 2024 Sales Tax Report. Candace Eisman?
Good evening. The March 2024 Sales Tax Report is available for your review. I do want to remind you that these revenues run three months behind as far as the reporting goes. We are at 3.79% of the, um, we are up 3.79% from the same period last fiscal year. Let's see. The May 2024 Monthly Financial Report is also attached for your review. The ad valorem tax collections are at 105.51% of the adopted budget. The target for expenditures used at this point in the fiscal year is 91.67%. And while some departments do appear over this target, that is due to the inclusion of encumbrances. So, if you exclude those encumbrances, there are no departments over the target.
Questions for Candace? Commissioner Sharp?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Carver? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Moving on to county manager's report.
Yes, sir. You have in your agenda package an update on some various projects. The Lee County Athletic Park, the work continues at the site with masquerading nearing completion. Paving is in progress with the first phase completed, including the driveway through the first parking lot. Sanford Contractors is now prepping for paving on Phase Two, which is the area around the baseball fields to the maintenance shop. Electrical infrastructure continues to be installed on site, and vertical, vertical construction is beginning with footers completed on three of the five buildings on site. Um, progress expected in the next 30 days includes fill, diamond and rectangle construction, foundation excavation, construction on the remaining two buildings, and paving on the second phase. Phase one and two of various park projects, including Kiwanis Children's Park and Temple Park. Temple construction is completed. Um, they are still dealing with some drainage issues on site that, um, we're trying to get resolved. Kiwanis Children's Park, if you've not been by there, it's pretty amazing how quickly the sidewalks got installed. It looks really good. Um, so hopefully, we can, um, we'll see the city extending their sidewalks, um, to that park soon. Um, Mark's Construction has started the construction work, um, as I said, which included the grading for the sidewalks and the playground and the shelter. Um, OT Sloan Park Accessibility Project, we have issued the purchase order for the playground equipment, um, from BARS Recreation. Um, and as y'all know, the bids came in originally over the project, so we're working with the grant administrator, um, to get that resolved and to figure out what we can reduce that project by and still, um, meet the requirements of the grant. Library Building Project, we are out to bid. Um, they have adjusted the closing date for those bids, I believe, to make sure we get enough bids on all the different services, and we are still working and moving ahead with the financing on that project. So, we're excited about that. Historic Courthouse is still about the same way. We will be, um, requesting a grant extension on that project. You heard the jail feasibility study at the work session, and we'll continue to work on that and get more information for you, um, as y'all requested for the December, um, work session. Comprehensive Fire Services Study has been, the, um, executive summary has been presented to the Fire Advisory Board and to the fire chiefs, um, and they will be here at our July meeting to make that presentation to the full board. Um, Soul Water, we are happy to announce that we have hired a new soul conservation supervisor who started work June 5th. Her name is Shannon Briles, and I'm sure she'll be coming to one of our meetings sometime in the near future to meet all of you. So, we're, um, very excited about that. Jennifer's over there smiling and stuff. So, that one's been a little tough to get filled, but we're happy to say it's done. You have various reports in your package from the different departments, and just a couple of upcoming announcements. We have July 4th that the Government Center will, offices will be closed, and we have our next regular meeting. Remember, we're going to our summer schedule, so we'll meet July 15th and August 19th. And then in between that, we do have the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference that, um, several of the board members will be attending along with staff, and we're very excited. That looks like a very interesting agenda for us, um, at that meeting. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the manager? Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Just one on the right-of-way that we were discussing at the athletic part, power right-of-way, that talks.
Jennifer, the right-of easements and right-of-way?
The easement, right-of-way.
Uh, we're, we're planning to bring those easements back to you at the July 15th meeting. We got the one from D.R. Horton and the other one from Green Hawk Development that's related to the adjoining property to Morelli. Um, so, we've been talking to those developers, and, um, we will have those at the next meeting.
Okay. I was just understanding that was a big deal for them to get that, so.
Yes, the, the, the site, Matt was updated, and they have provided us with an appraisal. Um, so, we've got the information we need.
I walked that months ago, and, uh, anyway, so, so that's why I'm dragging our feet.
With that, with that easement that's coming back to us, did they have other people's easements?
they had to look at too?
I don't believe so.
It was just ours?
It was just ours.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
I'm not sure I missed something, but I've been driving down Washington Avenue on a regular basis because I got something going on over there, but going by Horton Park and observing kids and families and parents trying to keep their kids off the road, et cetera, where are we on being able to get sidewalks in there and stuff?
We'll be bringing information to you on the sidewalks and everything in our July meeting under the manager's report. Jennifer and I have been talking about that. We had some information come in, but it was past the agenda deadline, so we decided we would put it on July's meeting.
The, the other aspect of that is the close parking to the road.
We're working on that, I'll say.
That's a possibility also?
We are bringing the option of a parking lot and sidewalks.
Yeah. Well, I was watching a mother with three children doing the best she could to get them out of the car, and I was concerned whether or not I was better stop my car because the kids looked like they were going to end up in the road. Anyway, I think there's some urgency there, so I appreciate you looking at it. Thank you.
I also wanted to add, I want to thank everybody for their support on the budget process. I'm glad to know we've got an adopted budget, and I appreciate how we also worked on it. And staffs, too.
Thank you. All right. We do have a closed session, so we'll continue with commissioners' comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Carver.
I just am amazed as I look at the advantages we have in Lee County. I'm about ready to depart and go to Africa. And I'll tell you, when I compare the two, there's, it's an amazing difference. I'm just thankful that we have the kind of cooperation and organization that allows us to give the citizens of the county the things that we're allowed to give them. The other thing I would like to say is with respect to the, the board assignments, there are a lot of people that signed up for those that obviously aren't going to be accepted. And I just encourage them in whatever way to go ahead and look at another board. It's not because we don't have faith in them, it's just the fact that there are X number of seats on the board, et cetera. So that, it always makes me sad that people volunteer and then can't necessarily follow through with their volunteering. The other thing I would mention is that it's hard. I, I'm thinking of the library committee, for example, or board, where we have a number of people who are rotating around, and they fill up the, the opportunities to be on the board. It's almost like maybe we could create a culture where the boards encourage a rotation on themselves so that we don't just lockstep, return people. I know we can change that, but make different choices, but it's sometimes difficult. And if, if the attitude was, well, I think I better step aside, I've been here for 10 years, that, that, that might be a good thing. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good tonight. I think I made most of my comments during the budget ordinance, so I'll leave it at that tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
I hope everybody had a great Father's Day, those that are fathers, and prayers for the fathers that lost children. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'd like to offer a recommendation on this joint board meeting. I'll wait till they finish.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I was going to offer a recommendation. I think it would be more fitting if we could get the county manager and the school superintendent and their finance staffs to meet prior to a joint board meeting to try and get some clarity. I've had concerns about not communicating well enough to know exactly what we're responsible for, and that seems to be the hangup right now.
I did meet with Superintendent Dawsonbach this past Friday, along with some staff, to get some clarification on my standpoint on how the ADM and the funding for the charter schools work.
Right.
But if there are other issues that you would like for us to get clarification on, I'm sure we can work something out to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have anything tonight.
I have a couple items. First off, I want to say thank you to the staff, to the department heads, everyone that put forth the effort on the budget ordinance, as well as the CIP. I want to say thank you for the, the staff that went to the North Carolina Association Legislative Day last week. We actually had two meetings with both Commissioner, excuse me, Representative Salz and Senator Bergen. And what we've been discussing on school funding and such with the state, we, we pushed that hard. So just to assure you there. I do want you to put down on your calendars, June 25th, and I would ask that the, the rant, and the newspaper, and everybody else would please advertise the Town Hall for Trillium Health Services. This is our new LME MCO for the mental health services in Lee County. The CEO and Vice President for the South Region will be here. It's scheduled for Tuesday, June 25th, from 10 until 12 o'clock here at the Civic Center. And that's 10:00 in the morning till 12:00. It's the Town Hall for Trillium Health Services. The CEO and the Vice President for the Southern Region will be there. She will actually bring a good part of her staff, so if there's anything that's unique to a situation, their staff will be there on hand to address and assist. But that's for Tuesday, June 25th, 10 to 12, at the Civic Center. Without further ado, we are going to break. Let's take 10 minutes, and then we will be going into closed session. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Motion been made to go into closed session?
We do have to read.
I was gonna say, you have to read.
The, um, motion.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Because it has to be specific.
They'll get there.
I knew that.
They'll get there.
We'll get there.
Have we finished the appointments?
Yeah, we need to hear the.
We'll do that after closed session if that, we, we need to talk to the chair about that.
We have a tie in a particular position.
I'm going to watch the game.
We have, we have a tie in a position.
A what kind?
A tie.
A tie.
So we need to address how we're gonna address that with the board.
All right.
I move that we go into closed session per NC General Statute 14331A.11A3 to consult with our attorney to consider and give instruction concerning potential or actual claim concerning procedure judicial action if known, and the title of this action is De County versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation, Cardinal Health, Mickelson Corporation, et cetera, corporate litigation.
You've heard the motion to go into closed session. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session. Can we please take a 10-minute recess? And we will meet, are we meeting in the room?
I think we can do it in here because it should be very short. That way you're not going there and then coming back.
Oh, okay.
If that's okay.
Okay.
I'll talk loud.
10 minutes. Give us 10 minutes. Colin, Colin, Colin. Set the timer for 10 minutes, please. Thank you.